Basically, a pop-up restaurant is just, I understand if like a venue, a wedding, a party event is great. I think you should allow to just, you know, could be a weekly thing, so we can come truck in and say, oh, this, I'll take this to the food truck, but I was selling it, but we really are not, that type of thing. It's like a catch 22 loophole.
I understand. I, I think the intent, I would have to look to see how the, um, the ordinance is written. I don't know if there's any limitations on there, but the intent was in for it to be temporary, you know, special occasions, not a permanent thing, to replace apartment kitchen like a restaurant would have. But I would have to dig deeper and defer to the solicitor on that.
Yes, in terms of changes to this ordinance from the last time at the last meeting, we put in the penalty provision that was raised by council in terms of what happens if they move a food vendor. That's hired for a special event and supposedly cater to that event only for the happen. So what we have is, uh, if that first event, so they move global food vendor, if they're basically hired by a business to cater a, an event at that business, if they sell to any member of general public, their, uh, global food vendor license would be revoked for a period of three months. And then the second offense, six months, and the third offense, permanently. So the idea is that whoever contracts with a mobile food vendor to provide services at a private event, they better only do that. So if they don't, then they're not going to have the right to have a mobile vendor license and sell the food. But there is no limit in here about how many times, if there's one particular venue in Delaware City that has events and they want to have a mobile food vendor there to cater to that event, no, it's not a limitation there currently as to how often that can happen.
And that's what concerns me because pop-up restaurants are starting to become a trend. And, you know, would stop somebody from having that pop-up restaurant event every year or every day?
Yeah, well, for the, for the, uh, tied in here to a private business that does not have the kitchen facilities, uh, they would have to get a license for that and they'd be penalized if they just were a pop-up. If they were trying to serve, I'll say a wedding, but then the door on the other side of the serving, a member of general public, that's a, that's definitely a violation of this permission.
I, I understand that, but it seems that the way, the loophole where they could basically say, this Saturday, we're having a dinner, nine kids or some wedding or something, whatever. And they just sell tickets in front of them, they sell tickets out the door. So the vendor, that's the person who has the venue or the retail space, who has to sell the tickets. So it's not like vendors have to sell the food, they don't actually sell the tickets, creating a restaurant or something. What I'm saying is, is the town is, it's a small town, you know, there's, you know, there's not a lot of business here. So it's, you're struggling like it is, and you just have pop-up restaurants coming up. It's, it could be, you know, it's not that bad.
Right. Uh, I'm not sure that was directly addressed in the, um, that particular issue with pop-up restaurants, but certainly prohibited, regulated much as we thought we could within this order.
And the other thing, you know, to consider too, if, when we get to new business, if this is adopted by council, if we notice things like that happen, we can always go back and amend the code or amend the ordinance. Just whatever's passed here, if it's passed tonight, doesn't mean it's permanent. So if something like that happens, we can come back and amend the code or make any changes necessary to address whatever's happening. Understood?
And the parking?
And the parking.
Are we going to reserve stuff? Are we going to let people hold spots and reserve them for a food truck? Which would be a longer timeframe of spot being picked up. Um, I know I have a, I am a ninety Clinton street right now, and my tenants have a proper parking area right now where the, um, tenant lives above, Savatino's is telling her that's her reserved spot and she can't park them. Which I told her is not true, but, you know, there is a parking that's already up there. Savatino's was good, but not in Arizona, that major.
Uh, understood. I, I agree. I don't think we should reserve parking just because of the parking property that had. Um, but, you know, valid point, definitely something council needs to look into. Yes, sir.
Uh, to elaborate on what I said earlier, um, I feel that a business that requires a kitchen which is served food in order to enhance their business should have to pay for a kitchen or install a kitchen rather than then rely on a food truck because it contradicts the rest of the businesses in town who are our, and they, and they take back the benefits.
Uh, under, understood. I think that's the same point John and Dale were making, so we need to look at the number of times that could happen in a year. I mean, the intent is for it to be temporary, special occasions, not to replace apartment kitchen. So it's kind of valid point and something we're, we're looking into with a point that John and Dale raised. All right, anybody else under public hearing? We have the, the tax rates and the mobile food vendor. Anybody else want to speak on either one of those topics? Okay, I'm going to go ahead. I'll leave the public hearing open so we get to, uh, the proper order of business in case somebody else thinks of something, but I'm going to go ahead and call the Board of Appeals, annual FY tax assessment meeting to order and also the regular mayor and council meeting. Everybody please stand for the plates. All right, I have a secretary of court.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Dedlock.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Curley.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon Plan.
Here.
City Manager Loveland.
Here.
Financial Manager Gray.
Here.
City Solicitor Rodunka.
Here.
Police Chief Henderson.
Here.
City Secretary of Intelligence.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go slightly out of order this evening. We do have representatives from Wismin, Geer, Dano and Associates here to go over our FY twenty-four audit. So whoever wants to take the podium, please help yourself.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate your time. My name is Frank DeFroda. I'm with Wismin, Geer, Dano. I'm the partner in charge of the audit and I'm here to go over the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four audit. So basically on page one of the financial statements is the report of the audit. It basically states that we've audited the company financial statements for the city of Delaware City in Delaware for the year's end in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, and relating notes in the financial. In our opinion, the financial statements refer to present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city of Delaware City. So what we have here is what we call a clean opinion or unmodified opinion, and that's the type of opinion that all government agencies would like to achieve, okay? Uh, the opinion also talks about the basis for our audit. Tess, okay. Sorry about that. There we go. Okay, so I'll kind of start over. So the main auditor's report basically states we've audited the financial statements as of June thirtieth, twenty-four and twenty twenty-three. It's a clean report, unmodified report. That's the type of report all government agencies would like to achieve, okay? Uh, talks about our audit is conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, okay? Talks about management is responsible for the fair presentation of these financial statements. They're required to have, uh, and design proper internal controls in their systems, okay? And as part of the audit, we review the internal controls, making sure there's proper checks and balances in place, okay? Talks about our responsibility. Our responsibility is to perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and generally accepted auditing standards. We're required to be independent of the government agency, which we are, okay? We're required to maintain professional judgment and professional skepticism throughout the audit, okay? We're also required to gain an understanding of the controls that I talked about. So again, what we have here is a clean report. You follow generally accepted accounting principles, okay? As far as the balance sheet goes, for the year, your total assets were ten point eight million this year compared to ten point five in twenty twenty-three. So you have an increase of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Most of the increase had to do with cash and investments, okay? So cash is up about six hundred thousand. Investments are up about eight hundred, uh, eighty thousand. So for the year, you're about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars up. Your liabilities are up about four hundred and thirty thousand, so it went from two point six to three point three. And that mostly has to do with, uh, grants that haven't been spent yet. That'll be spent in twenty twenty-five as well as in twenty twenty-six, okay? So again, your balance sheet is a strong balance sheet at the end of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-three. When you look at your general fund, uh, once again, your general fund, the balance sheet is strong for the year. Your revenues for the, the general fund for this year were two point six million dollars. Uh, your expenses were two point three. So for the year, you had a positive two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So your revenues exceeded your expenses by two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So again, shows you had a good, positive year. Then throughout these statements, we have the notes to the financial statements. It gives the reader a better understanding of the policies that the government adheres to, okay? So, uh, most of the disclosures are consistent with the prior year. There's no new disclosures to report to council. And then in the back of the report, we have the budget versus the actual schedule. And what this does is it takes the general fund budget for the year and compares it to the actual. So for the year, council budgeted one point seven million in revenues and they brought in two point six million. So you had a positive eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Main reason for that had to do with the intergovernmental revenue, the money you receive from state and federal government. A lot of times, we don't know what the state and federal grants are going to be for the year, so it's kind of hard to budget. But we did receive eight hundred thousand dollars more in revenue for that. The expenses, the expenses were budgeted at one point seven to balance the budget. Expenses came in at two point three, so there was a variance of about six hundred thousand dollars. And that mostly had to do with capital outlays, uh, in the, in the, in the city as well as the fireball pass-through grant that came in. So again, for the year, we had a positive two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, there were no material findings or recommendations that we needed to be made. Everybody was very cooperative throughout the process. All the books and records were available to us and there were no disagreements we found. And that's all I have to say. Is there any questions for council?
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, the only thing I have is, I don't see it under new business to approve the audit, so can we put that on next month's agenda? It has to be done, is that, it has to be done by resolution? Okay, we'll put that on for all of us. All right, we're going to go back to, uh, regular order of business now. We're going to the action upon the previous meetings, minutes of the previous meeting.
Motion to accept the minutes. Uh, meeting Monday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Our motion is second. Any further discussion?
One, all of the table. Uh, two.
Motion's Aaron. And real quick, I, I don't know if everybody noticed, we have a couple guests in the back that are set up with a laptop. If anybody needs to get set up for the code red notification system, feel free to stop back. Um, get you all registered, set up and ready to go, so. Uh, police report, Chief Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, council, city staff, and those of the citizens that like to present June police report. You look at the crime view map, starting from the upper left hand, I'm sorry, the upper right hand. You'll see one of the two larcenies from the, from last month. This incident was a theft, some outdoor decorations from assault ops, unfortunately. With by an unknown blackmail and of late teens or early twenties, uh, there's no further suspect information or security camera footage of the subject. Uh, moving down toward the center, you'll see a gray suspicious person pinpoint. Uh, that was two males and a female that were, it was reported at three AM that they were looking on their vehicle. Uh, for some reason, Newcastle County Police were not dispatched at that time. The subjects were identified and contacted by media after the fact and denied that they were up to anything suspicious. And there were no reports of any thefts or other crimes on that date as a result of this activity. To the left of that incident is a purple fraud complaint. That was actually a vehicle stop, a touch on insignificant events. The orange simple assault pinpoint toward the center of the map was a minor physical altercation between two adult males while at a cookout. Both parties refused prosecution after officers responded and resolved the incident. Just below that complaint is a green noise complaint where nine-one-one was called on a loud neighbor at approximately ten-thirty at night. Officer First Class Williams responded and resolved that matter. Moving down below this complaint is the other larceny incident last month. The victim reported a five-gallon can of fuel taken from the bed of this pickup truck. There is no suspect information, information regarding this. If we keep moving down to the cluster of four pinpoints at the bottom, we'll start with the green disorderly conduct at the far left. That incident was between two adults that occurred in the evening hours and resulted in an arrest for criminal trespass and harassment. To the right of that is, it's actually two simple assault pinpoints at the same address. These two incidents were not assaults, but reports have neglected to mention where officers assisted other state agencies. Both incidents were classified as unfounded and no charges were filed. And finally, the two green or bullish green noise violations to the right were from the same residence where neighbors had complained repeatedly. The department has not been able to con, they contacted the resident uh, after repeated attempts. Uh, we forward this along to Park Management for follow-up. For our June calls for service, we were extremely shorthanded last month, the worst event since I've been here in Congress. Uh, but for June incidents, we have fifty-seven incidents compared to thirty-nine in June of twenty twenty-four, which is extremely low. That's a, they're up forty-six point two percent this past June. Uh, the incident's standard in June was three hundred and eighty-nine, up from three oh one. And June is twenty-four. That's a twenty-nine, twenty-two percent change. Our June totals, we had sixteen traffic arrests, four warnings, one crime prevention check, thirteen crime reports, eighteen, twenty-three field service reports, zero accidents and four criminal arrests. For significant events, Officer Williams responded to the city of Wilmington located in African, the subject, it was wanted by our department for breach of release. The subject was transported to the Baylor's Women's Correctional Institution in lieu of five hundred dollars secured bail. And during the traffic stop, Master Corporal Helen arrested the operator for criminal impersonation. Subject attempted to use, use false information to avoid being arrested for a quarter common pleas case. Subject was transported to the Howard Young Correctional Institute in lieu of a total bail of thirty-five hundred dollars. And Officer Webb completed the Army Reserve's Basic Leadership Course at the Non-Commissioned Officer Academy Camp Harks in Dublin, California. BLC prepares soldiers for the responsibilities of a non-commissioned officer while emphasizing leadership training and warfighter skills with a strong focus on practical application and team-based learning. Congratulations to Army Reserve Sergeant Webb. The department is in the process of field training and additional part-time officer. Sergeant Brandon Dunning has joined our team and brings a wide variety of both operational and administrative experience from his twenty years at the Smartland Police Department. And then if I may, I wanted to touch briefly on the homicide at the Mobile Home Community that occurred Monday, July seventh. I personally was on vacation that day. Luckily, I went back home and just off from work. So I received a call from Major Felton of the Newcastle County Police around nine-thirty AM advising me there had been a shooting in the Mobile Home Park. The victim was seriously injured. Uh, suspect had fled the scene on foot and was still in bar and believed to be armed. The Newcastle County officers started to set up a perimeter around the trailer park and, uh, Harbor State generally and assumed the investigation as they immediately began dispersing various special ops units. Delaware State Police also assisted, as well as other agencies insured. I notified our officers of the incident and requested anyone who was available to respond. I also informed City Manager Loveland and Major, or Mayor Johnson, who coordinated the code red notification system as I attempted to give updates via Facebook post before arriving in town. And the Mobile Home Community Management was also informed of the incident. On my way here, I learned that the victim who passed from his injury was traveling. My first stop was to the library where the Newcastle County Summer Youth Camp was taking place to check on their safety. One of our officers began immediately checking our camera system while other officers assisted with the perimeter and safely evacuating the summer camp attendees. I responded to the Newcastle County Command Post where myself, our officers via text messages, and even the mayor gave the Newcastle County Police pertinent information and area logistics leading them up to the apprehension of the subject who was hiding in a rear yard in Harbor State. He was taken into custody by a Newcastle County SWAT without incident. And while we have responded to this address previously for various types of complaints, we have never responded for an incident involving these two individuals in any way nor any signs leading up to this tragedy. I would like to add that it's still an ongoing investigation. The information is limited at this time. Our department continues to work closely with the Newcastle County Police regarding the incident. And Mayor Johnson is scheduled to have their incident review regarding this incident on Tuesday, July twenty-ninth here at the Fireball. The mayor may have to add that that concludes my police report.
All right, any questions for the chief? I have a few things to add. I'll save that under for my mayor's report. All right, thank you, sir. Want to move on to the, um, city manager's report?
Good evening, Mayor Johnson, I'm in Delaware City. Um, the first update I got tonight is on the Clinton Street paving project. We've received two bids for the Clinton Street paving project and will be issuing the award later this week. Uh, the work is expected to begin before August fifteenth. We received grant aid again this year, both for Delaware City Community Center and the Delaware City Daily Committee. Can you have my microphone, please? I don't know. I could try to talk louder if not. Hello, hello, hello. I'll just try to be louder, okay? Does that work? Sorry. So we received grant aid for, for this year again from both the Delaware City Community Center and the Delaware City Day Committee. Uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty-six bond and capital improvement act extended bill two hundred appropriated a total of twenty million for the community redevelopment reinvestment fund. From that amount, our organization has been awarded a total of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, with two hundred and fifty for the Delaware City Library Restoration, one hundred and fifty thousand for Delaware City Town Hall Front Rear Entrance Restoration Project, and one hundred and sixty thousand for the Delaware City Community Center and Power Bath and Repairs. The, I'm working with our area representatives for code red to look into expanding the system's boundaries since some residents have had trouble signing up for their own addresses. Right now, the coverage area is limited to the city limits. There are costs involved with expanding the boundaries, so we're reviewing different GIS maps to determine the best way to adjust the coverage and make sure we're reaching the right areas. Uh, I would like Lydia for coming tonight and offering help anyone get signed up with code red. Uh, she's also going to be available at the after incident review if anybody wants to attend that to get signed up. We have CRF funds that were designated for a seawall and sea level rise study. That study was completed over a year ago and I'm now working with Verdantis to develop a proposal for necessary repairs to the seawall, including the replacement of missing seawall panels. I'm also scheduled to meet with two representatives from Del Dot in August who are working directly on infrastructure resiliency related projects for their department. We want to ensure we stay in communication with them and that our evacuation rounds are considered in upcoming improvement projects. We're scheduled to receive an energy audit through Energize Delaware at the end of July. We're interested in exploring opportunities to improve energy efficiency within our municipal facility and identify potential upgrades that could reduce energy costs and support sustainability. In addition, we've begun the application process for two electric vehicles for the police department through the Energize Delaware program. Although it's still early, we're optimistic about this opportunity and the potential to enhance our fleet with more sustainable, cost-effective vehicles. I've joined with the Food Bank of Delaware to bring their support to our local volunteer-run food closet. Our food closet has been operating solely on donations and with the food bank's support, we'll be able to relieve some of the stress around keeping it stocked and ensure we can continue meeting the needs of our residents. Um, at, at the council meeting two months ago, Mayor Council requested that I reach out to Delaware City Main Street Organization to address questions that have been brought forward by residents. I reported last month that I had met with the organization president and asked for their financial statements and five oh one C three status be made available on their website. I also requested a public board meeting be held and that new board members be elected as no in-person meeting has been placed in several years. As of the June council meeting, I had not received any response or seen any of the requested financial information posted online. And that remains the case as of today. I did follow up last Monday and ask for an update in time for tonight's meeting, but I have not received any new information. Uh, with the sudden closure of the Delaware City POW, we realized that the colonial lunch program, which provides free lunches to any child eighteen and under, would no longer be available in Delaware City. I reached out to the program to see if the city could continue it without the POW, but unfortunately, the host organization, a host organization is required to continue running the program. So I contacted Lori at the library and she immediately agreed to take the lunch program on, including all the work involved, to host it for the kids in our community. So I'm very grateful to Lori for her willingness to support this. Please send any child who's... So please send any child eighteen and under to the library from twelve-thirty to one to receive a free lunch through August. Uh, I just also noted that I attended the June twenty-fourth Board of Adjustment Meeting, July first, the sort of Preservation Commission Meeting, July fourteenth, Planning Commission Meeting, July seventh, Community Advisory Panel, Community Committee Meeting, and the July ninth, Forte Palm Board of Director Meeting. My report.
Thank you. Any questions for the city man? Thank you. City specialist.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items to report this evening. Uh, we did prepare a draft memorandum, a statement for council to consider based on council, uh, comments and information that council received regarding Main Street. And, uh, we think we're doing that a little bit later tonight. In addition to that, we worked on several legislative matters and then there are two matters to be discussed in the executive section.
All right, any questions for this list? All right. All right, finality report. I just want to focus on the highlights of stuff since we just did the audit, that's for sure.
Okay. Um, and good evening, Mayor and Council. And I did put, um, small, uh, notes down at the bottom of the pages I'll be addressing. And good evening, residents. All right, here I go. This is intimidating. Um, so, page one, and we, we, I realize, um, since I wasn't here for May's, um, review, I included it again for all of you council members, just in case you have questions later, I can address some. You can get in touch with me, but I am just going to address the chairman of the board since it's the end of our fiscal year. I made it a year. So, I, um, the first page is the summary of revenues and expenditures and... Okay, let me start over. The summary page, I included, uh, notes on the bottom. We ended the fiscal year twenty five.
I think it's because that one's on, maybe?
We ended... On this year. We ended FY '25 with a surplus of $224,000. And that can be explained when I move over the next few pages, but I think that's a very good year. The next page is the non-departmental revenues. Can you guys hear me? No? Oh, my gosh.
Hello?
See it? That's me!
Hello?
Okay. So...
Twist the top again. Alright.
Hello? Hello? Okay. Second page, non-departmental revenues. We closed the budgeted year. We came in close to budget. We had a positive variance of only $11,844 that did not come in. So, I think that's very good. And the investment account did very well despite the market, and the interest income account did very well. The investment account brought in $26,979 over what we expected in budget. And the interest account, when we turned on the interest for all of the checking accounts and to help bring in more income, we brought in about $25,000 in interest. So, that was a good idea. Page two, under General Admin, I noted that we closed the year with less than budgeted expenses. We had a variance of $153,213 that we did not use in the expense category. And page three, the code enforcement department did fairly well. The budget was a little high, because from what I understand, the person only works one day a week, so it's more part-time. But the actual was only... Was the revenue was under by $4,095, and the code enforcement expenses were under by a variance of $3,376. Page four, our public safety department, thanks to the chief and his team, we had, with the income that they brought in, we had a positive variance of over budget by about $234, which, I mean, I think that's okay to mention. The expenses were closing the year, which were a lot lower than budget, and the variance was $51,000. That was under the budget on the expense side. And I'm gonna skip to page five and six, so I'll skip over that. Page seven, various project revenues and expenses. I just wanted to note that the engineering bill, they started the paving project, the street project paving, that we have a grant and money for. So, we spent $1,000 for the beginning of the engineer review. Madison and Monroe Street project, I'm still waiting. We spent $40,000, but we will... It's a reimbursement grant. We will get that back. And I'm just waiting for that money to come in. Unfortunately, it didn't come back in time to get into our 25-year. And then, the tree commission. I allocated on the line for the budget to be what it should be, which I hadn't reflected it. There were three different funds that were used during the year, and they ended their budget year with a positive variance with only spending under $15,560 with that. Excuse me. And page... The last page that I gave you guys was the cash balances. So, I just wanted to reiterate again, our cash balances ended pretty well for the year, and that is mainly because of the interest that came in and the investment account that did very well, considering that the market was kind of a little wonky there for a few months. So, I feel like fiscal year '25 ended on a positive note, because we were... We ended with a surplus. I conclude my part. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for the final? Thank you. I just want to thank everybody in city, state, and everybody for finishing another year.
Always got a question? Mr. Mayor? Yeah, just a couple of questions. You mentioned the investment accounts, both the liquid account and the investment account. How are those accounts managed? What are the investment vehicles used? Who's overseeing the management of the selection of the investment vehicles? How was that reviewed?
Well, I wasn't here for the selection. Oh, do you know? I mean, he wants... Do you want to know, like, the type, whether it's bond-related?
Yeah.
You know, stock market?
This is a managed account through whispers, through a portfolio of management. It's... I don't know who the first king is, but it is the first thought against numerous assets.
And it's one that required, you know, a very high level of investment to start, so... But I'm confident.
I... Excuse me? He wants to get you the name of the...
I would just be interested in how often the council reviews the investment strategy, approach, management philosophy, etc., as opposed to just letting it run.
We do have it. We have a portfolio manager that does that for us, as long as it's positive every month or every year. I'm not asking any questions type of thing, you know? But, I mean, we'd be more happy to disclose how it's allocated, what percentages. Most of that investment was started when we sold the waterfront. So, there's a little bit over, what, $1.2, $1.3 million in there, something like that, that we're just allowing to grow, that has, you know, any future catastrophic failures, anything like that. So, we'd be more than happy to get you as much information as you need. I just don't have it in front of me to...
I mean, I would think the community would be interested in understanding how the portfolios are managed, who's managing them.
We can do that. We can invite the portfolio manager to a meeting and address all accounts.
That would be advised.
Any other questions for the final?
Mike Gracie from Cook Street, 530 Cook Street.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to thank the city staff and everybody for another year with a surplus, another surplus. Very important again, considering how challenging the economic times are nowadays, so it speaks volumes that we're able to complete the year with another surplus. Do you know when we're gonna roll into the FY '25 audit process?
Oh, my gosh. So, I do not know. But I will let you know. He hasn't even presented that to me yet. I think it was around this one started in mid-October with the letter of, you know, engagement and all that. But there were just a few things that held it up this year for this long. But I don't intend on it being taken this long for this upcoming year. So, it should normally be, like, start reviewing in November and maybe be done by March. I mean, that's what history dictated when they had to find them.
Just a few memories, that's all. Alright, if there are no more questions, I entertain a motion to approve the financial report subject to audit.
I'm making the commission that will accept the financial report.
I'm pushing second. Any further discussion? One is favor. I remember going to... There's no appointments this evening. We're going to announcements and communications and organizations or committees that you get a report. Anyone? Yes, please.
And Don Plank, Chair of Planning Commission. We're losing two members, so I have two openings. One, the Planning Commission. If anyone's interested in serving on the Planning Commission, either can email the mayor or the city manager to your qualifications and your vote in there.
And, sir? Anyone else? That's tree commission.
Yeah, we're seeing tree commission. We have our next meeting will be July 30th at the Community Center at 6:30. And we're looking for volunteers to help push your trim trees, especially even for just a half hour. You can reach the tree commissioners through the city hall. It'd be really helpful just to have somebody make sure it doesn't fall on my head. You know, a break. Simple things. So, and then, we're still looking for a sixth tree commissioner who's the volunteer position. And we need this person, and we need the person... It would be great if the person has skills and passion. But I took this charity ship a year ago, because no one else could. And I'm looking for a backup. We need more people who know how to do this, in case I'm not around forever. So, I hope that the word can be spread, and it's in the newsletter as well. And I sent an email to the email list of people who are interested in getting on the tree commission email. So, if anyone wants to be added to that, let me know. I'm gonna let town hall know. Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Is there a plan? Real quick, I knew there are ideas just before, but I just wanted to follow up to see what the plan was. There's a few that didn't survive the recent planning, and I know they're under warranty. Is there a plan to get those replaced?
Yes. The company that planted them has said that they're ordering them, and as soon as they're in, they will plant.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, any other organizations? Library?
Coriolis Delaware City Library. As you already mentioned, the library is supporting the summer lunch program. I just want to emphasize, there's no registration, there's no signup, there's no cost. So, maybe kids 0 to 18 will come down to the library, get a meal. Officially, it's maybe through Thursday, 12:30 to 1:00 p.m. We're not strict about that. You can have a little later, a little earlier. Hey, we're not gonna let anybody go hungry. With the class closure, we have tried to wrap some of our programming, especially during the hot hottest summer day. There are flyers on the back table, check our calendar. One program that I especially wanted to mention is one of my favorites, is both educational and entertaining. On August 5th at 10:30 a.m., we will have the Wilmington Police Department P9 unit come out, do a really cool demonstration of what police does. So, hopefully join us. August 5th at 10:30 a.m.
Thank you. Delaware City Bank? Right now?
No report.
Report? See? That's legal.
Alright, so for Dragon Run, we actually have a couple of things. So, we are collecting our water car party now. So, August 9th from 1:00 to 4:00, come on out. We're gonna have food houses, water slides, food, come to ice, ice cream truck, Grand DJ. Special appearance from the fire company again, okay? But all are welcome, so please come out. There is no age restriction. We're just gonna have a good time, cool off for the summer heat. At that event, we are gonna be doing free signups for our reschedule bus trip. The bus trip is going to be in September, where we are gonna be doing signup stat today, and we're gonna have an official signup date announced later at the end of August. So, it's open. Now, for the Delaware City Food Closet, I wanted to give a shout out to the library again, because we are accepting donations, and it is more request to meet people to accept them. So, Lori and your team have been collecting donations for us. If you have any donations and you're not expecting a little money by the end of the closet, the library is graciously taking the form of sending them to the back. So, any donations can be dropped off there or at town hall. We are always accepting donations, even for the health of the food community, which is a big issue. We will always accept donations and volunteers.
Okay. Thank you. Remind you anything? Reed?
So, we did have our annual ballot out this year, and some of the contents are sharing, amongst from Delaware City, who are Delaware society. The Delaware City June 8th Committee, so we get a big hit for next year. And the Delaware City Senior Center, we are giving them $6,500. And we are adding to the Dragon Run Park. We gave them $5,000 on December. We have $10,000 extra dollars that we had given out last year from the Center of Sharing. So, we gave them $5,000, and we gave the park in the passing city $5,000. So, we added another $6,000, $6,000 this year for each one of those parks. So, the Delaware City Park, we gave them another $6,000 each. We're able to help lots of the car accommodations to do this every year. We pick money, we can count profits. We try our best to cover as many private means that are in the area, from veterans to homeless people to seniors. So, we try to do that, and we try to be, you know, good neighbors. We gave $5,000 till the Delaware City Day. We gave another $5,000 in September. And we have some money to sign with POW for fact-sophisticated, our day of opening, month of opening.
They will be back open in Vienna, Fall, next February. But that's the last of them.
So, if somebody can get me connected with them, so we have that just a little money with that.
For you, Tim, anything?
Yeah, just very quickly, we just had a very successful concert this past Friday night. Next one is on Friday, August 15th. We have a band called Delaware Highway Company. Please albor, not to start at seven. No charge, bring your own chair, bring your mud spray. Forget you heard of those, fill it in. But you gotta promise, before the concert, instead of making tickets, you go take some beer at one of our local restaurants and then...
I'll see. Who am I missing here? Main Street, Tim, anything?
National Night Out, Spill the Box, and that will go nicely with the P9 over at the library.
Any wrap up for Juneteenth?
We had our final event for this year, and we've begun planning for next year.
Thank you. Anybody over... Did HPC say anything for HPC? Name? Please, HPC?
No, I attended the meeting, but I don't know. The word letters appropriateness for property downtown, but beyond that, that's good.
Yes.
Property downtown, yes. 604 Front Street, I believe? 604 Front Street, I believe. And if you'd like a copy of the letter appropriateness, I can send it to you.
Is that the garages?
It's the garages, yes.
Freetown Monroe requested a variance to build a second homicide, a little property. Listen to what they have to say. And the code enforcement officer had an objection to that, and she'll be passing 50.
You know how the here's the notice system?
Okay, so I'll just get out?
Yep, they all...
Hold on, let me think about this again. So, they requested a variance to the crew to build a second house?
Build a second house on property. They can do that without doing something.
Not initially, but it technically has to go... I mean, I'm laying a planning pass, but it actually has to be with the board adjustment.
Yeah, that's the next step. So, we're... Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the board adjustment, so they, Planning Commission recommend it in favor of it.
This one?
It's a variance from a semi-detached to a detached.
Okay. I'm just making sure this through the property challenges and so on. Alright, anybody else? Any other organizations? Alright, final call? Alright, we want to move on. Before I go into the old business, and close out the public hearing, is there anybody who wants to comment on the resolution for the tax rate or second reading on the mobile food? Before I go into the old business, and close out the public hearing, is there anybody who wants to comment on the resolution for tax rate or second reading on the local food? All right, that concludes the public hearing, we move on to old business, which is, item one is the second reading and possible adoption of order is twenty-five dash zero six one six zero three, read the chapter fifty-one, article three, section fifty-one, dash thirty-five, on local food. So we have the, we have the information in front of me, we've heard the public comments this evening. I defer to the city solicitor, but I believe the three options that council had is to approve it as written, make amendments to it as heard from the public. And I believe they're already able to table it one more time, though I think there's a thing that we only table it twice, right? So if it is tabled, this has to be the final time that it's tabled, so there, those are the three options. Approve as written, make amendments, or table it.
I know the move could be tabled, um, in lieu of the discussion about, um, truck and hot wet restaurant, so we can clean this all up and to end it all together and to avoid hesitation.
My second.
I also think parking is in the short run as well.
Yeah, and parking, and parking issue to it, uh, we want to discuss, um, reserving parking spaces.
I thought they had their own, own spot there that they were.
But there is, there is.
Yeah, it does, nobody has their own spot.
Well, I mean, there's a spot inside of it.
That's city, that's just regular parking space.
It'd be mental if you were ever to.
We're doing.
And also discussing whether or not they're serving alcohol, which there may have been a rule or stuff.
And to add to that, I also think there's a way that our business community can come together and come across, it would maybe be some kind of resolution to it, it would be more acceptable as well.
Yes, yeah, I would like to see our business community get together and, and possibly have a meeting with each other and get everybody's input on how each one feel.
So we, we have a motion and a second on the floor, I just wanted, want to caution council that the next time we bring this back and it's put on the agenda, we have to take action, whatever, it can't come back up. So just my, my recommendation is just to make sure, if it comes back in August, comes back September, whatever, that we're ready to move forward with some type of boot or some type of action. If we're limited by who, how many times we continue.
I agree, but I also think we want to be correct and over that.
Oh, no, absolutely, and that's, that's why I say take your time, is to make sure when you bring it back, it's the final version and you guys are ready to boot it. So if there's no more.
So I'm confused, hold on, so if it's being tabled tonight, it's with the intention that this is, sort of, changes again? Or, or what?
There's still some questions in the air, you know, there's questions.
I guess there's a couple amendments to be considered as far as, um, you know, the number of events they're going to permit, is there a number of events they want to permit throughout the year? So that, that doesn't become a replacement for a permanent kitchen. And then the other thing was, are there going to be any limitations on reserve parking?
Do we want to add those things into this existing?
Well, that's what council and everybody needs to discuss, make recommendations back to the solicitor to bring the final vote next month.
So that's what you want them to do, make recommendations to bill for a new version next month?
Yes.
I guess just email them, email your.
I mean, the only other way to deal with honesty is to call a special meeting, because if you have a quorum, the council getting together, that constitutes a meeting. So the only other way to do it would be to call a special meeting, or each individual council member can email you and the solicitor changes, which is, is, that's what I would recommend.
Now that, that, if we did another meeting, that necessarily would be, have to be taken then?
We need to do a special meeting on the topic, but I think there's, there's only a couple of changes, honestly, I think it could probably be resolved through emailing the city solicitor and city.
I'd like to see, there's no doubt about it, like you said, it's already been discussed, what, three months now?
Well, the solicitor heard the concerns on the public hearing, I'm sure he'll be in a position to draft something favorable for everybody to review, but if you guys want to email him your considerations, then we'll bring it back next month, that's fine. All right, so we got a motion and a second on the floor, is there any more discussion? The table, uh, now, all is in favor of table?
Aye.
Code? All right, motion's carried. All right, second, order of new business, uh, I don't think we're ready for this, we're trying to build a vacant properties. All right, so we're gonna move on, we're gonna, we're gonna skip that one this evening. Discussion on creating a committee to begin planning the bicentennial celebration in twenty twenty-six. So we talked about this before, about maybe combining, uh, Delaware City Day, changing the day of Delaware City Day, possibly making it a day, a day two day, or a weekend event. I think that would just start those discussions for what our plans are.
Uh, so if I can, I specifically, uh, who we appointed a few months back to head up an event committee?
Yep.
That would take charge on planning like the Christmas parade and, and bicentennial and, uh, we've talked to her, she has selected a date to hold the first event committee meeting. Uh, to start planning for this event, um, I don't know if Delaware City Day necessarily agreed to plan, I don't know if they wanted to do that, I mean. I don't know if we need to come in a date for which the bicentennial take in place. Um, I know that I've talked to a couple of Delaware City, uh, day members and volunteers that have feelings on it those ways too, so I just don't know if that was decided or not.
I think that was up to the committee to make a recommendation, but what I would do is definitely make, have that meeting and have a recommendation back for next month, so we can start getting invitations out. Because we're going to lock that date in as far in advance as possible, because there's going to be a lot of people invited, it's going to be a big event, we want to at least have it planned as close to a year in advance as possible.
So do we want the event committee running now, or do we want Delaware City Day?
Well, I think it's going to be, I think it's just going to be a joint meeting between the events and Delaware City Day, to see if it's a keel event on one day, and then they can work together like that. If it's decided to hold two separate events, then they would just meet independently. And if anybody, if anybody disagrees, please speak up, I mean, I'm just kind of speaking from a hip here, so, if anybody has any other ideas, please, please let me know.
Any other comment?
Yes.
I reached out to, uh, Jill Snow and Jerry, uh, Jerry has agreed to help advise whoever is running this, because they were majorly involved in the previous bicentennial. Yeah, that was for the last big event that they had, so she agreed to, you know, be on the advisory, uh, they're both very retired and didn't really want to directly get involved, but they said they would love to be on the advisory, something like that.
All right, Lily, does that work for you, which is, does that work for you?
I'll tell you later.
So the, the meeting date that she had set for the first event committee meeting, could we put that out there?
Yeah.
And if anybody's interested in attending that?
Yeah, what was the date again?
Uh, August eighth for the event.
All right, August eighth is the events committee meeting, that they're discussing the bicentennial celebration in twenty twenty-six, if anybody's available.
Where's that meeting going to be held?
Probably the community center.
Community center in the service room. All right.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not sure, you know, last week we talked, they're going to create the event committee for this, I don't know, other conversations were had with Delaware City Day, I don't know. So I don't want to step on Delaware City Day's feet, if they had planned to, to take this on, go ahead.
No, I think there were some discussions, maybe six months ago or longer, that it might be a joint event, then I was told it was likely going to be separated. And if it's back together, that's fine, you know, whatever the city decides they like to schedule, if you wanted a separate event, I think you mentioned maybe that, the names in June.
It looks like the last time they held an event like this, it was held in June. I couldn't find the significance of the June date, when I researched it, but I was not able to.
In the last, one, I believe, um, I remember when I was a kid, they had, you know, a celebration in nineteen seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Yep.
Yep.
Great big dinner in the park.
And we're also watching cartoons back then.
I think they had a big black tie dinner at the park, that was quite elaborate, really well attended, and it was really special.
Wendy, can you make the, the August eighth meeting, so we can kind of discuss, and I'll, I'll make sure on there as well, kind of paint this thing out. I'm, I'm fine if it needs to be a separate event, or.
I was getting ready to say that myself, I kind of like the idea that Delaware City has their own individualism with their celebration, instead of mixing it up with a federal, you know, celebration.
Is that a Friday, sorry, August eighth Friday?
August, August eighth is a, yeah, August eighth.
August eighth is a Friday.
It's a Friday.
Just to make sure that's the date.
Lydia, August eighth is a Friday, was that good? That's right, August eighth Friday?
Yes.
But you want to change the.
Is, is that at six P M?
Yeah.
So August eighth at six P M, and if anybody's interested in being a part of the event committee or planning the bicentennial, please attend that meeting, um, so you organize the planning.
All right. All right, item number four is resolution twenty-five zero seven two one zero one, adoption of the assessment rule for F Y twenty-six and the tax rate for F Y twenty-six. So, first thing, is there any questions on the F Y twenty-six assessment rule? Except where F Y assessments went on. So, the second part of this is the F Y twenty-six tax rate. So essentially what we have to do, and we've been talking about this for months, is depending on how the properties were reassessed, we had to adjust our assessment rate down. Prior to this assessment, our tax rate was around a dollar, was it a dollar nineteen per one hundred? So we essentially had to divide that number by five to get us the same amount of revenue that we were generating before, without increasing Delaware City taxes. This has nothing to do with the county taxes, trust me, I just got mine today, almost felt we were as well, so this has nothing to do with the county, this is just Delaware City. And we are trying everything that we can to make sure our Delaware City taxes stay the same as they were before. So having said that, our new assessment rate is going to drop down to point two six one five cents. So that's twenty six, basically twenty six cents per one hundred versus a dollar nineteen, that's going to give us the same amount that we collected before. I will say, look, it's some residents' tax bill may slightly get up, some may slightly go down. Um, it all depends how your property, individual properties were assessed, but that rate is going to keep us pretty much revenue neutral as mandated by, um, the, the legislature than when this assessment came out. Is that correct, Bill?
Yes, sir, I'm going to add one thing, is that the reassessment was triggered by a lawsuit brought by people in regard to funding of schools and fairness of funding of schools. As a part of this resolution to this matter, there was a reassessment, but the school was permitted to increase their assessment by up to ten percent. So if you're in a colonial school district, they approved, their school board approved a seven percent increase on the school tax. Your school taxes are as high as part of your tax code, so in either your tax code compared to last year, you need to keep in mind that there's a seven percent increase to the colonial, uh, school district tax as a part of that. But as far as Delaware City, the tax rate was set to be revenue neutral in terms of the revenue brought into Delaware City. But you'll see an increase naturally, the seven percent increase for your school tax will be something that you'll see in either tax code.
All right. Having said that, is there a motion to approve the F Y twenty-six tax assessment rule and the F Y twenty-six tax rate?
I saw a move that we accept the F Y twenty-five twenty-six tax rate as specified.
Awesome.
Second. All right, motion second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Code? All right, motion's carried. We're going to move to a member of council comments, Councilman Doug.
I'd say it was a tragic day, but I think the, I think we came out really with a tragedy and I think, you know, people go, she pulled together, like everything else, it's, it's good for our eleven small town.
Thank you, Councilor.
Uh, uh, the councilor was saying, you know, it was a shock to the community, we haven't had gun violence in town in, in, in Beverly, as far as I, it's been many, many, many years since, uh, anyone of us even thought of that being something to be concerned about in Delaware City. Uh, I want to thank our law enforcement folks for, um, sharing what they can, for being there, and it just raises, I think, again, the importance of us having our own police force, and we support our, our officers, our, our police leadership. Um, as the communities grow in this area, uh, we, you know, we're, we're isolated to a certain extent, and yet we can still be impacted by people from the county around us. So, you know, my thoughts there. Uh, I attended the library board meeting this week, and it was a miracle, uh, they scheduled it for an hour and it was done in fifty-three minutes, never before seen this before. I, I just wanted to say, um, how impressed I am, uh, how appreciative I feel, uh, uh, for Lori. Everything that comes across her desk, she takes on. The food, you know, she's personally feeding the food and things, her staff and me are busy doing other things, and so she is personally taking on, uh, the extra load. So Lori.
Thank you, how's my night?
Uh, a couple of things, one, I do feel we have to be very careful what we're doing with the food trucks. I've been the first one to actually go against this whole concept from the beginning. And I'd like to see something be resolved, but like I had mentioned earlier, I would also like to see the business community come up with a situation to help us make the right choice. Number two, uh, the celebrations, twenty twenty-six, I'm all about separating, I would rather see us have each one of stand on its own merit. And last but not least, my, uh, accommodations to our police force. Excellent job.
How's your woman doing?
Yes, um, I attend the library board meeting this, uh, month, Mr. Preservation Commission, I think. Uh, it's, uh, unlikely to be made, because when I was chairman of the Mr. Preservation Commission, nobody, nobody took to the patients. No, I, I felt like I got no support from council and, uh, or our mayor, and so I've tried to support them, because we have a commission between our commissions and our council. So we all have to stick together to help each other out. Um, I would like to commend our police department for the great job that they did during that tragic incident. Uh, we had, seemed to have had a system that was, uh, word of mouth, that was very quickly, I mean, within seconds, I got a phone call from, uh, Wendy. And we just kind of passed that along, so it was kind of cool to see the whole town come together and inform each other, keep each other informed. I also would like to know, um, why we tabled the vacant lot discussion tonight?
The solicitor's still getting, collecting information on this subject.
We'll get on the jurisdiction and see how to handle it, come up with a best plan.
Okay, because I, I do believe that there are several people here that came tonight, uh, because they have questions regarding the, uh, the junk that's been putting into vacant lots, to the point of almost being, uh, a harassment type of thing.
They could still make their comments on the public comment.
Yeah, they, right, okay, good, and that's all I have to say, thank you very much.
All right, please, Mary Jackson.
Um, I'll start with thanking Chief Henderson, the rapid response to everything, uh, I received a phone call from Brittany first I heard about it, I've received the call of some individuals in town. As Miss Dill Payne was saying, we, we all share everything we get, every time somebody hears something, we try and get it out. I recommend everybody sign up for Red Alert. For those that are a little less computer literate, a little less smartphone literate, we're back there to help you. That's it.
All right, thank you. All right, a couple, a couple of things I had, um, a couple important meetings coming up, one is actually this week on the twenty-fourth, I believe it's being endorsed by Senator Ford, Representative Meyer Graham. It's in reference to, I don't know if everybody's been watching, seen in the newspaper, proposed eleven building data center in the area of Room Nine and Amber. in the area of Route Nine and Hammer Road, which is just north of the refinery. One of the concerns I have, I'm, I'm all for progress, I'm all for A I, cryptocurrency, creating jobs, I'm, I'm all in support of it. The concern that I have, and I'm going to ask on the twenty-fourth is, and, and most people don't think about this, but in terms of residential electric usage, we're used to talking about kilowatts in a home. Citywide, it gets bumped up to megawatts, you know? For instance, I don't know what Delaware City uses. City of Newark uses around sixty megawatts. This data center wants to use one point two gigawatts. Put that into perspective, that's more than all the power being generated or consumed in the entire state of Delaware for residential, commercial, everybody. So that's enough energy, the power between seven hundred and fifty thousand and one million homes. Which my concern is, is this boils down to, number one, the grid is not going to be able to handle it. It's going to need major infrastructure improvements. Number two, it boils down to a sensible supply-demand issue where there's not going to be enough supply to meet demand. And that means it's going to be placed on the backs of my constituents in Delaware City by increased electric bills. So I want to make sure that it's not going to happen. And to make sure there's a plan in place to meet this energy demand because everything that I hear in the circles that I'm in from here and the city manager of Clayton is the state does not have enough electricity. They're talking about rolling brownouts, rolling blackouts between now and twenty thirty-two if we don't get this energy crisis solved. And now we're talking about adding a one point two gigawatt facility that's going to dwarf the entire state of Delaware for energy, which to me does, doesn't make sense. But that's just me. I'll be there on the twenty-fourth to ask those questions. And if anybody has any concerns, I'd wait you to tend to one.
Where was that located?
What time is that, six?
Um, I believe it is. Yeah, six o'clock here.
Can we speak to one of Delaware City's?
We can, we can do that. Alright, the other meeting is going to be, uh, the twenty-ninth, seven P M here also. That's an after-action review of the shooting that the police chief talked about. Um, I also want to commend our, our chief in our, our police department. Now, we're, we're not used to events like this, thankfully, and they don't happen very often. Key is to make sure that we're prepared to respond and to make sure we're able to mitigate that emergency, which we were able to do in cooperation with the county police. Um, everybody there did an outstanding job. I didn't wait a lot of fingerheads on the twenty-ninth to speak about this incident without going into a lot of details. Like I said, we can't go into particulars. My concern is to make sure everybody understands the process that we use to get information out to the public and make sure everybody's safe, um, informed in a reasonable amount of time. Just so everybody knows, our first move to is social media is the fastest and quickest way for us to get stuff out there. And we're hoping that spreads by word of mouth. People calling, people checking when they're found, followed up by code red. Code red takes a little bit longer because there's a sequence of events that we have to do to go through to get code red out there. And even requires whoever sent this message out to put a, a launch code in there. And if you don't have your launch code, the message isn't going out. So it takes a little bit longer, but we're going to follow it up. We could have read and make sure that people are informed like we did on the day of the shooting. Letting everybody know to shelter in place or whatever we need to do. The other thing I'm gonna, I want to kind of dispel and I'm going to allow the, the fire chief, I actually talked about this on the twenty-ninth. There's a lot of misconceptions out there about response, Tom Williams, and it took the fire company forever to get there and all that. That is absolutely not true. We were dispatched here at zero nine thirty. The ambulance was on the street in forty-five seconds. Less than a minute they were on the street, which is, is unheard of. They did have the steaks at, uh, Kathy's Restaurant for seven minutes because shooting, we don't send our staff into active shooting scene or stabbing scene or anything like that that puts our people in danger. There's rumors out there, it took us twenty minutes to get there, absolutely untrue. And I, and trust me, I get it. I've been in these situations. A minute seems like an hour when, when things are going on. But I just want everybody to know that the fire department down here is fully staffed, twenty-four seven. They're usually out the door within a minute or two. So there's no delay in responses. If they did not respond into the scene, there's legitimate reason why they did, and it's mostly because of their own safety. But I don't want to get too far off track and I'm going to allow the chief and the chief officer from, from the fire company here to speak on that on the twenty-ninth. But I did want to kind of put some of the rumors to the rest of the scene. Also wanted to thank the city manager for, as you heard, we have received five hundred and sixty thousand, Brittany? Five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in community redevelopment funds. You know, this was a very tough year. The state was, um, you know, claiming they didn't have a lot of money, which they didn't. They didn't disperse as much as they usually do. They didn't approve any P M projects. It's a very labor-intensive process. I know this was Brittany's first time going into portal and up with all the information, but we were very successful, pretty much got just about, I believe, everything we asked for, right? So except for the P M, so, um, thank Brittany for that. Um, I'd also like to thank, we have a resident in attendance this evening, George X, who put us in touch with the Clean Air Council. So we're in the process of working with the Clean Air Council on installing several monitors around the city. That's going to, um, you know, monitor air cleanliness of the air and parts per million of different things. And it's going to be on, I don't have the, the website. I think it's purpleair.com forward slash maps, I think. But I'll put that on, on my map, or my, I'm sorry, on the mayor's page. Again, already posted it once. But put that map up, it shows all the monitors all over the entire country. So if you're traveling somewhere, you want to hope the air quality, whatever, it's on there. Um, but again, they will be down this Friday to start installing, uh, these monitors all around the city. Uh, dragon running repairs right out to Route here where the snooze state is. Um, the state is going to repair that broken snooze state after Delaware City Day. It's going to be like the one south of reading point break when you go over that first little, um, snooze state right there. They're going to redo the road, the gate and everything that will solve the flooding issue over on the one, uh, Cox and Route. So very much looking forward to that. And finally, um, talked about the closing of the P A O Center. I'm not going to say too much. This is an ongoing issue. I got a, I got a call from the director a couple of weeks ago. He said the P A O Center was closed for a couple of weeks. The budget was overspent, whatever. Fun, the time to look at we is to keep it open. What we need to do to, you know, to help things along and keep it open, since then, I've learned that Hookessen P A O is open and Barfield P A O is open. So the only P A O Center that closes down is Delaware City, which, which I, I have a problem with. I've been in touch with the, with the Colonel of the county police. I've been in touch with the county elected officials. Been in touch with the board members of the P A O. And I was assured that it's going to open as, as soon as possible and this is not going to happen again. So, it's an ongoing issue that we're still working on, but I just wanted to let everybody know it's not something that the city supported. Very disappointed because I know how many kids use that facility, um, and, you know, you ride by there and goodbye there and see the doors closed. It's very, very disheartening. I think that pretty much concludes my report. Um, we go into, uh, citizens comments. Any citizens have any comments? Yes, sir, Dave.
Uh, maybe I missed it in our new business. I had one discussion on employee with Delaware City municipal organization. I don't think we presented a discussion.
Oh, my apologies. I did, I actually wondered if you were talking about one. I'm going to go back to, we'll go back to new business real quick. In your package, there's a proposed MOU between the city and Main Street. This came up. Part of this came up last month. We were asking for recommendations to put an MOU together with, uh, Main Street just to kind of memorialize our relationship between the city and Main Street. And also to have something in place down the road when all of us sitting at this table are no longer here. You have other people that can look back at this document and see what the intent, what the purpose of Main Street and Delaware City, what the goals we were trying to accomplish. We're not ready to take any action on this tonight. What I'd like to do is have the city manager take this back to Main Street. Review this as a draft and then we will be ready to put this back on the agenda next month for adoption and consideration. Or consideration and adoption, I should say. Unless anybody has any, um, further recommendations, but I believe everybody that responded from council, your recommendations were put into this document and drafted by the solicitor. If you want to take some more time to look this over and get back to Brittany if you have anything, where she has the meeting with Main Street and then we can wrap this up next month. I'm looking forward for discussion. Like I said, we don't really have to take action on this, but if you want to discuss it, that's fine. And thanks, Dave, for putting that out. I'm completely agree with your talking.
We received comments from several council members that are incorporated in this memo. Please review it. Let me know what your thoughts are. Just generally speaking, there was a certificate form of formation filed in the state of Delaware for a nonprofit entity. There are bylaws as well. And so as you go through there, what you see is that there should be conformance with the bylaws for the organization. And that's what you see in, uh, what, like your, if there's any additional comments you have. And then Brittany can then, uh, help you, Main Street can review, uh, review what we've come up with as a group. But obviously conformance of the bylaws of the organization is certainly required. And I'll make sure that you get a copy of the bylaws and see what they are because that really does take some, 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 some.
Tim and I had a very brief discussion today about the MOU. He's supportive, thinks it's a good idea. So willing to work with the city and get this done and move forward and then hopefully we can, um, get on track, get the Main Street, um, meeting and back to doing the great things for the city. Any further discussion? Yes.
Was there a timeframe since she was here? I know that Brittany was waiting for more information regarding Main Street, some of that documentation. Is there a timeframe on, she's here, so is there a timeframe on when that's going to be completed?
Well, she was waiting, Brittany was waiting on comments from council, if individual council members had anything they wanted to add to this MOU. So we have the...
I'm referring to the, the documentation that she had requested from Tim.
Well, that's part of this MOU. So we have the draft MOU that spells out what document is going to be required. And then once we approve this through council next month, then that will start the process of collecting that, those documents. Of course, you know, um, anything volunteered for that, we'll certainly take the documentation. But, you know, the goal is right now to get this MOU in place with those stipulations of what's required, when and all that stuff. So the goal is to have this back to council on the agenda next month and get this bylaws. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Two of Live Adams, uh, one point twenty-one gigawatt. What the hell is a gigawatt?
Gigawatt is, a gigawatt is one billion, one billion megawatts.
No, I'll, my more question is about the, uh, the tax. I got the tax bill today. We're up five hundred. The neighbors over here, senior, up seven hundred. Over here, seven hundred. Across the street, fifteen hundred. And it's mostly all colonial. But I thought colonial school tax is only allowed to raise to four percent, not seven percent, what you were saying.
What I saw in my research is they approved the school board approved a seven percent increase of school taxes.
No, I read something about four percent was legally all neighborhood level.
And it said, I mean, the school district had a shot at bumping up ten percent to the maximum referendum. So most of them busted up significantly, sunk to ten percent because they had a free shot to get ten percent increase on school taxes. But colonial did approve seven percent.
And do we know when the Delaware City tax bills will be mailed out? Once you get the new rate, like in the next three or two?
Yes, now that new rate is approved, we can wait. We're waiting to close out our year end. We're a little behind because Newcastle County didn't get the assessment loans out to us until now. So we have to get the end of the year closeout done this week. And as soon as that's done, the new tax rates will be processed in the system and the bills will be out within a week. Or by, by the end of next week, I'll say. A lot of stuff.
Yes.
So kind of speaking on that, um, there are a lot of towns, especially historic towns, that have taxes on a grading scale where it has a grandfather clause, where individuals who have lived there for a certain amount of time have to fix tax rate depending on how long your family's lived in the area, pending out all new, going to your property and such. And the reason that they have this is so that way when property taxes inevitably go up over time, people aren't bought out of their houses. They can, they can no longer afford to keep up with taxes on. Um, so what I'd like to propose is that next meeting, if, would I be able to get on the schedule? I can give a full presentation on what that means and what that looks like.
Yeah, you could, you could do a little presentation.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so if that's something that people are interested in, come find me after. Yeah. Let's talk.
Great. Any other citizens comments? Yes, sir.
First, I'll say thank you to Chief Chris Adams, who is part of, um, pocket service. Everything orders and we're the green. So we can provide what it is to, to hold up.
Yep, so we just adjusted, um, so here's some of the things that have been done for the police department over the past year. So we put them into the pension program, which we weren't able to do before. We've adjusted their pay scale. And even in the FY twenty-six budget that we, we just adopted, we adjusted their pay scale. So we're more competitive with other agencies. So we're not losing our officers to other organizations. But you're exactly right. One of the things that we're going to be looking at moving forward, and we've already asked for, uh, the chief, we put a proposal, which he has done, um, looked at what we need to do to move toward a full-time police department. I don't know what that's going to look like, honestly. I know we had, you know, we had a two hundred and something thousand dollar surplus from twenty-five. I don't know what that surplus is going to look like on twenty-six after we adjusted so many salaries and other things like that. What I'm trying to do is, is avoid going to the public for a tax increase, especially now how everybody was slamming like the, uh, the county taxes, the schools, stuff they got. So the plan is to, at some point over the next few months is to have a public meeting and, and hear from the residents what exactly they prefer. You know, some residents you hear, I don't care, I'd rather pay a little bit more taxes for twenty-four seven coverage. Some people are struggling. So we want that decision to be driven by the public. And hear feedback from the public on, on what they want us to do. I've been a big proponent since I started this mayor thing six years ago, that was one of my goals to get this twenty-four seven. Haven't been able to do it yet. And that's the reason, is I don't want to push the burden on the, on the residents and continue raising and raising and raising without me being a hundred percent sure that this government is operating as efficiently as possible. So that's where we're at. Appreciate the, uh, you had a question and being as honest as I can, that's kind of where we're at right now. Appreciate you, sir. Any other citizens comments? Yes, sir.
Tim Delphine, wanting to take Clinton. Uh, where are we at on the twenty-minute signs in front of the post office?
Uh, we are working on getting new signs in front of the post office. We have a couple of requests. Our businesses on Clinton Street working for new signage. So we're just working to figure out where the new signs are going to go. Getting new signs and then order them and, um, putting, um, we're still confirming exactly which areas are needing new signs. So it's happening. We're looking and, and thinking one of the other previous meetings there were questions about stop signs and putting in, uh, more aggressive stop signs and things like that. So we're looking at all the signage to get, get put in.
Citizens comments?
I have a comment. I would like, I've been here, my name is Nancy Heyer. I did half a day in Harvard. I have a comment. I would like, I've been here, my name is Janne Ray, I live up in Harvard State. I've been a citizen of Delaware City for 35-plus years. I've been dealing with an issue for the past 15 years, and no one, I feel, has ever listened to me. So I came to a meeting a couple of months ago, and I want to express my appreciation and gratitude for the hard work that Brittany put in to resolve my issue. She listened to me, she talked to me, she heard what I had to say. The first person in the last 15 years to actually listen to me and hear my issue. So Brittany.
Is that the tree issue?
Yes.
Okay. I want to cross that off my list.
Yes.
All right, citizens' comments?
Hi, I'm Jessica Smith, 210 Clinton Street, and I also am a Dallas neighbor. Please not speak again. My staff and I have received numerous issue complaints from voters that have come in about the waterway, the depth of the water. I'm not sure if you're the appropriate audience to address this with, but maybe it could be the voice of whoever this needs to go to. But a lot of the voters that, because they think the city cannot get out of the water, the waterway because of the tide. And so I thought, you know, I would just bring that to attention, I promised them the opportunity. On another note, I'd like to thank everyone that you are customers of Dallas Bankers. And Dallas Bankers includes a lot of your friends, family, and neighbors. And those of you that aren't customers of Dallas Bankers, we're certainly welcoming you to come down and join us and look at the new Dallas Banker.
Thank you. Just to follow up on the dredge, and we recorded a depth of the boot ramp or the dock there. We did have a dredge, I think, what, three, three years ago? We're trying to be on a five-year cycle, so it's due in two more years. We know it's pretty difficult over there, the tide and stuff like that, and it was so bad last time, they didn't really take as much out as they needed to. So the next cycle, we're hoping that we'll correct that issue down there. And I'm also going to try to get on the dredge across from Dallas Bankers, where that clutterage is, where all the vegetation's growing up. We're trying to get on the dredge in there as well and clean all that out as well. Citizens' comments? John?
Hi, John Buck, 30 Clinton Street. First of all, definitely saw, Cleveland's been stopped. They even sit on Facebook for now to be bragging and doing missing water, brought Lloyd down, and every country punched him back.
Are you looking for my work?
Second, the signs in Delaware City, welcome to Delaware City Sign, we're coming in from Brooklyn. Is that missing? Is that still here? Because I seem, I don't think it's there.
Honestly, I don't know.
Who want coming in, your cats? I don't think that is.
I think that may have been taken down with the crash. When the DOD came out, they told us, they want to replace it with a trial.
No, that's in the refinery, I believe that's what it is. But I was probably here, my question was in, from Route 9 way or the Cox. Either way, has no one in Delaware City signs, and I think it'd be nice if we tried to add some of the Delaware City signs.
There's one, the one, there's one right up here.
Yeah, that's coming from the refinery.
Okay, so there's one, there's one.
Nine is coming down Cox. We used to have one on Route 9, but I'm missing something. It's not there. On Halloween, Dallas Bankers will be closing, first of all, we'll be hosting a costume party for kids under 21 at 5 o'clock. Kids over 21 will be at 10 o'clock. And we'll be at our last night, Dallas Bankers, we're going to close down the Clinton Street side. We're going to open up on the bar side, but we'll be installing all new public refreshments. They're going to be single-stall bathrooms, dangerous for you, so you don't have to figure out which door. So that's going to happen from Halloween to, what, February? But what I like to see, and I'm assuming your bathroom is right, and we're in a tourist area. And I hate when I go someplace and there's no public refreshment. Even the city doesn't have public refreshment, even if you're at the town hall. So whatever, but I like to see the city have a goal, as I call it, public public refreshment. Encourage people home, they have nowhere to go.
Well, I mean, porta-potties, I mean, I've never been feeling porta-potties.
Well, it's getting poor to do a deal, because they have public bathrooms, so yeah.
Yeah, we've talked to them numerous times, but there's been, I don't know if it was a issue with janitorial, or there was an issue, or some type of late vandalism, or something happened in there, and they decided to close it. We tried to work with them on numerous occasions. We can revisit it and talk to Mark Wise again and see if that's a possibility, but we tried it before, and for some reason on their end, it didn't work out, so. That's why we got stuck with the porta-potty.
And last but not least, Main Street used to be a great organization. We had public meetings, they brought a lot of grant money into the town. Since Tim's been president, we haven't had that. And I've asked him privately to resign, but tonight I'd like to ask him publicly to please resign. You're not helping the city, you're tearing this apart, we're working together, but you're, it's Tim's room. You're not even here, you're just my parent. Thank you.
All right, citizens' comments? Any other citizens' comments? All right, let me check, make sure I've got everything on there. All right, there's no more citizens' comments. We do have business that we need to discuss in executive session, so I'm going to reset the public meeting.